...to order and rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Suzy Rolcom.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Here.
Councilmember Barkis.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here. Motion for the consultant agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion or changes? Here in Nansu.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, before we go on, we're going to turn the meeting over to Chief Hurst.
Well, I'd like to introduce the council and the audience. We have a new officer going to swear tonight. Keegan Neller is sitting over there. Stare at there, Keegan. He comes from St. John's, Michigan. He attended St. John's High School, graduated in 2018. He also graduated with a bachelor's degree of science and criminal justice from Ferris State in '23. Am I correct so far? We first met Keegan last year when he came to the department needing an internship. He rode 100 and was it 200?
A little over 172.
Yeah, 172, something. Did a great job in the internship, got great reviews by our department, and before he left, I says, "When you graduate, come back and we'll give you a job." He did come back in December. We interviewed him and we talked to everybody that he gave us to talk to. Even drove over to St. John's and met his mom and dad, Randy and Shannon. And the whole group back there is our way that's came here to support us. I think that's awesome. Sisters, brother, sisters, cousin, aunt, grandma, so they're all here to see him get sworn in. What's that?
Fiance.
And fiance Brianna. She was the one I really wanted to talk to because they're decision makers. After Keegan gets sworn in tonight, he'll come back. We've got a bunch of paperwork to fill out for him, and then he'll start our FTO program. FTO is our Field Training Officer Program. Spend about a week or so in the office learning policies. And then we'll turn him loose to the streets with another one of our officers and they'll show him the ropes. Depending on if he makes it or not, if he makes it, he'll get a bigger badge. So, we'd like to swear him in tonight in front of everybody. If you're ready, Sue.
Please raise your right hand and pay after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of part-time police officer.
Of part-time police officer.
In and for the city of Lowell.
In and for the city of Lowell.
County of Kent.
County of Kent.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to our dysfunctional family. All right, moving on to public comment. Susan should start. Trail easement, grading permit, old business, number A, Mike.
The Lowell Area Recreation Authority has been negotiating with Grand Rapids Gravel to require trail easement and grading permit. I'm going to have Dave explain it to you before you take action because he can explain it much faster than I can.
Thank you. You may recall, we need three separate easements for this project. The first one on the west side is from Grand Rapids Gravel. It will connect to the existing trail, the township park, and it will go along the southern boundary of their existing mining operation, continue east onto the city property, and we head that way. Because MDOT funds are involved, we were required to get an appraisal done for the easement and present that to the property owner, which we did. The property owner then came back with a counter offer, which the LARB board felt was excessive. And so they came back with a kind of a middle-of-the-road response to that, and that was accepted verbally by Grand Rapids Gravel. In addition to the basic amount that was in the appraisal, this project is going to intrude on a small portion of area that they intended to mine in the future. They didn't know it at the time when they started, but as they're mining, they're seeing that their product is more favorable than they thought. And so they need to mine within the area that we want to put the trail. So in order, and they're not planning on mining that area for a couple of years. So in order for them to, for this to happen, there, as a part of this deal, they were requesting some additional funds so that they could advance mine in the area of where the trail will encroach on that. Because their mining operation is not that far east, they can't use their conventional setup that they have now, which is a conveyor system that they excavate and bring the product back on various conveyors and pilot. So they would have to mine this manually with backhoes and dump trucks and haul it back to the property. So their quotation for doing that advanced mining was additional $25,000. So the numbers that are presented to you today include negotiated easement amount based on the original appraisal, plus the $25,000 for the advanced mining request. There's two, actually two documents. One is a permanent easement that the trail existed, and that was the $78,511. And then there's a temporary grading permit that allows the contractor to work outside of the easement area during construction. And that was the $16,467,000.
Yeah, the total cost we offered is $94,978. The city has committed $94,677.35 in ARPA funds for costs related to the trail. Last year, we needed to obligate the funds in order to receive our statutory revenue sharing from the state of Michigan. As a result, we informed the state, we use these funds to offset wages with the police department, creating that amount going into the unassigned fund balance for the general fund. So we can use these funds from our fund balance to pay for this expense, which is part of our commitment to the project. The DDA has also agreed to commit $300,000 to the project, which has not been spent, but we are considering allocating these funds to Lyra to remove this commitment from our budget. And I'm recommending that the Lowell City Council approve the trail easement and grading permit. Good faith offer with Grand Rapids Gravel. The cost not to exceed $94,978.
Any questions from Mike or Dave?
So when they're all done, do they need to backfill what they took out so that you have a graded path to walk around as part of the trail, Dave?
That was part of, well, first of all, part of the negotiation is we didn't want them to excavate and then our contractor was going to have to pay to fill. So their cost includes bringing it back to what we're calling our subgrade. So our contractor will just have to build on top of that. So they've included that cost.
Good question.
And that's kind of the last big puzzle on that side of the river, right, to get the trail?
We are, we have verbal agreement with the Walgreens property, which we're just waiting to execute. And so we have this one in place, and this one, and then the Reagan property, we have verbal approval on that. Recently, Eagle threw a curve at us with permitting, and we've got some changes that we're discussing with the Reagans to accommodate those Eagle requests. So I've got a meeting with them in a couple of days, and then we'll be able to backfill.
So your next speaker is getting the bridge across the river, right?
That's phase two. We'll get phase one going, and then we can finally start working on phase two.
Any other questions?
I have one. I attended my first meeting last week and I'm learning how the authority works. But I just want to make sure this is a city-only expense, and this isn't shared with the townships.
So all of the funds for this project have been donated, and I think I did get a chance to meet with Eric and go to the project ahead of the LARB meeting, since he was new to the group. But I think I gave you a breakdown of all the funding that has been donated and received towards this project. It basically goes into a pool, and so the funds for any project expenses will come out of that pool. The city's contribution, I believe, Mike, is $135,000 total to the entire project. That's what I have on my list, but he's giving me that look like I don't have it on my list. But the township has agreed to give some, the city has agreed to give some, the DDA, the Lowell community fund, et cetera.
You're talking about the $35,000 merit gap?
$135 total for the.
Because I had a hundred.
Entire project, okay.
But I remember we committed 35 years ago, and then the DDA committed 300,000.
Yes. So I may be speaking, but the point is that it's kind of going in one pool, and it's being used as needed. So everybody's got a piece of these easements, essentially. All right.
All right, and I'll look for a motion to approve the trail easement and grading permit.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Any other discussion or questions? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thanks.
Jim, you're up. Fireworks first.
All right. So we did put in a request for this year for the 29th Annual Riverwalk to have our annual fireworks display. Those fireworks would be scheduled for Saturday, July 13th. Again, Riverwalk Festival is always that second weekend of July, so even though the Fourth of July is on a Thursday this year, which is also a summer concert night, we are planning to proceed with your approval with our fireworks during Riverwalk on that Saturday, the 13th. Everything is status quo from years prior, shooting the fireworks off at Stony Lake there and then using the same vendor. So those requests for that fireworks permit to be approved and signed by the city.
Any questions? Motion to approve the Riverwalk fireworks permit?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion. Sue.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Street closure.
Thank you for so, your support on that. So street closures also for Riverwalk Festival. These would be primarily, again, on that Thursday evening and Friday, July 12th, and then Saturday, July 13th. So similar requests to what you've seen before would be that back row of the parking lot there, just west of Monroe on Avery Street. Also looking then to close Avery Street east of Monroe to Jefferson Street, which also crosses over Washington Street as cars drive in there and park on the side of the road. And then also requesting permission to close Main Street, working in conjunction with Chief Hurst for our car parade, if you will, when the cars all leave the car show. I understand that Washington will be undergoing some road construction. Our classic car guys will probably not park on a dirt road if that section is tore up, but I am willing to, obviously, work with the city and reposition cars the best we can during that time. And it is posted on our website that Washington will be under construction, so people coming are well aware.
I'll park my recs out there. I only have two of them.
One thing to note about the car show is that we will be having a dyno machine. I think we can make that happen within the same spot. That's a ramp that cars drive up on to test horsepower, which is all new to me. But we're going to plan to work that within our same space.
But if you'll be there for the noise ordinance?
I wasn't listening, say that.
Apparently, you're not going to be ready.
These are daytime hours, so we should be okay there.
Motion to approve the Riverwalk street closure.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion. Sue.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
And Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Number thirty, farmer's market.
Okay, farmer's market. So after some conversation, again, having only been in this year, this role for one year, kind of observing where and what's happening with our farmer's market, we are in a position where I think we need to attempt to change or, and/or in the future, consider what the Lowell farmer's market means to our community. At best, we are seeing 30 to 50 shoppers in a day at our current location. I don't think it really has anything to do so much with our setup, but we're looking for more walkable traffic, also hoping that, listening to community feedback through various channels and offering some evening hours. We think the best way to do this is by bringing it a little bit closer to the summer concerts. So we were looking at the parking lot that is positioned there, north of the library, by the boat launch. There is a bit of a crew drawing in there, but you can see we have about 140 feet of lawn space, which is what we typically use for Riverwalk, but this would be a weekly use where we think we could set up, have vendors set up that they'll, you typically sell out of the back of their vans or their trucks, set up their tents in the lawn, and we would be able to have our farmer's market there. We're positioning it as a 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. I'd like the farmer's market to be done when the concert starts on those Thursday evenings so that all focus can be on our paid entertainment for the evening and also the sponsors that are so generously helping to make the concerts possible. So sponsors would still be positioned up by the stage while farmer's market would be north there in the boat launch area and going up. We're fully aware that we'll need signage and help from a potentially new market master to ensure that we are not impeding access to the boat launch. So signage and such will be ordered to help make that possible. So I'm, oh, that's, I know a lot, so I'm open to questions on that.
So you're going to ask your vendors that are going to set up to not park there, right, to try to get open for the boat launch?
Yes, we would want to keep the boat launch open so that obviously kayaks and everything, yep, can get in there. And also not to park along where that vacant building is right now, as many, you know, trucks and trailers park there after they've unloaded their boats. So we'd like to try it. If we have to make adjustments and things as we go, you know, we're certainly open to that feedback as well. At the most, on a really good day, at other locations, we'd maybe add 15 vendors. It's typically anywhere from eight to 10 vendors, so it's not a whole lot. I'm hoping this can help it grow, but also realizing that many of our vendors that exhibit are coming from out-of-town or neighboring communities. Lowell, quite frankly, is flanked by markets on farms, Red Barn, Heidi, Starver. So these are other vendors that are coming in here and looking to do business.
That's a good idea.
We had, so we used to have in the parking lot, we had in the veterans' lot. The issue, the issue was is that, I mean, especially like with, well, when it was in the parking lot behind City Hall, that wasn't the best location because it's away from everything. But if it was across the street, it was, it was a little difficult because it was in a parking lot, and it was, you know, if you're on one side of the street for concerts, you got to go across the street. So that was an issue from what I recall, but I like the idea of putting it on the north side because it's in conjunction with an event. I found, I found that when you do it like that, they tend to be more successful. So I was, when she brought this to my attention, I was pretty supportive of it.
All right, any other questions? Motion to approve the Chambers' request for the farmer's market.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion. Sue.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
And Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Sue, everyone's not here.
I, yeah, I am. So, yeah, we've been having an issue with the credit cards. So myself, Rich, well, you know about this. You experienced it kind of firsthand when we were in Lansing.
Yeah.
But myself, Rich, Sue, and Chris, all of, we have the city issue of credit cards. The issue we have is there have been times where the credit card, we had a $10,000 limit between all four cards. So everyone had hypothetically $2,500 each. We've had issues in the past mainly because we purchased a lot of, a lot of stuff, DPWs through Amazon, but we, when we had conferences and so forth, we've had times where we've maxed out the credit card to the point where we've actually, some of us, myself included, had to use our personal credit card to get reimbursed for conference expenses because the credit card was maxed. So I asked Sue to talk to our credit card to work at Bank to extend the limit. Originally, we were going to just double it from $10,000 to $20,000, but I figured maybe with $25,000, we don't have to come back because we're buying more stuff on, I mean, we're buying more parks and stuff on Amazon, Public Works is, and it's just, I feel comfortable with $25,000 limit. We approve, we pay our credit card in full every month. Myself, Sue, Janelle, we verify all the credit cards every month to make sure no one's buying things they shouldn't be buying. So, I mean, there's, there is an audit in place, so it's, I'm not concerned about increasing the limit. So I'm recommending the city council approve spending limit from $10,000 to $25,000. We need, we need some sort of approval by the council in order for them to extend our limit.
Any questions on that?
I just have the one, so Rich could order up something for $20,000. So it's a total of $25,000.
It's an aggregate of 25, yeah. It's an aggregate of 25 between all of us. So, but between, there's certain times of the year where at $10,000, we've, I've known at least, I'd say last year, we've had it maxed at least three times. And we, and because of our budget process, sometimes we just, you know, we have to pay. We wait till we get things approved, so the card is, is at its limit, so we really need to.
Yeah, I'm okay.
I'll bail on it.
All right, motion to approve the credit card limited increase.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion. Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right. Eric, how about some board and commissioner reports?
A couple. I attended the LARB meeting last week. That was interesting. He shared the highlights, but I'm excited that the construction might start this year. If everything goes well, that's a might, but that would be exciting. Arbor Board, the four trees that we were going to shake downtown have changed to 18 to 20. Our arborist has, for the same money that was approved, our arborist has helped us out there. Rich worked with him. Thank you for that. So the majority of the large trees will be shaked in the downtown, just to take off stray limbs. And my historic board is coming up later this morning.
I didn't intend Lowell Lake Power Board. I haven't had an opportunity to watch it yet, so I don't know what's new and exciting, and I forgot to set my alarm clock for that Arbor Board.
See what happens when you retire?
That's right.
Parks and markets tomorrow, so nothing there yet. Expo's this weekend. You can check it out. Saturday, 9:00 to 3:00.
We didn't have planning because there wasn't anything on the agenda, so hopefully next month.
Fire authorities swore in, Chief Elzin. We did our final budget amendment for the year. And the preliminary budget, draft budget is now, or preliminary budget is going to become the draft budget. So let me give it to Mike to look over, and then I'll get it out to you guys. And then Mike will have a little bit of a heads up to help you with any questions you have on it. We talked about the lobbying effort for the house build so fire authorities can fund and bond on their own without having to rely on three different funding sources. And I think that's it. I don't think we talked about any others. Questions, comments, concerns, budget, or monthly reports?
I just want to add one thing on the budget report. Obviously, I'm working on the budget right now. But my projection, I have done a projection for, at least for the general fund. The good news is if you don't take into account wear road expenses and then the fund balance approval you took tonight, that you're going to spend off tonight, my projection is will be $73,000 to the good at the end of the year. But adding those, I haven't added those in yet, and I don't know what those aren't going to be yet. I mean, I have, we haven't approved them out, but sometimes those come in differently. But as of right now, I mean, other than, other than that, that's the only real issue that really kind of jumped out at me when I, when I've been doing the budget. So there's one other thing, but I'm not, I'm not at a point I can fully explain it yet. So I will, once I have that, so.
Any other questions? City manager report.
Yeah. As you know, I've been working on the budget pretty much, this time of year is pretty much all I do until the deadline of April 15th. The, we had in our last meeting set the budget work session April 22nd. Jim has a scheduling conflict and had made a request that we could move it to the 29th of April, the Monday, the 29th. Also, Rich is going to be out of town on vacation, so I would like Rich to be there. I was wondering if it was possible if we could move the date to the 29th of April, Monday. Same time would be five, you know, dinner at 5:00, 5:30 DDA.
I'm good. I would actually prefer that if possible. You good with that, Mondays, Monday?
Yeah, that's.
Just making sure. I'm going to Florida. I need to make sure you're coming back.
Yes, I'm coming back.
You'll be back in. No, Rich will not be back.
I thought you were, well, that's fine.
Was he flying on the 29th?
Oh, I thought you were flying on the 28th, okay.
You want?
25.
I'll just hold his budget till he's back.
So the 29th, and everybody's good with that? It's still a Monday. All right.
All right, moving on. The August storm event, we are not going to be eligible for funding. The reason being is the state guidelines for emergency management funding now are, you have to accrue $30,000 in overtime in order to be eligible for anything. We actually, if you include the municipal light power, we came in probably about $23,000 overtime between, I think the city's was about $4,000, but the light power between that and their commitments that they had from other entities coming to assist it, it was about $23,000, but it doesn't, it doesn't need to cut off, so we will not be getting any reimbursement from the storm. The Monroe Island, I have reached out to the engineers about shrink, shrinking the island down to still prevent the trucks from going northbound on Monroe from Maine and also to, you know, having the island so the trucks don't go through, but eliminating the left-hand turn. I've asked the engineers and I've talked to staff about it. We're looking at the possibility of, it was suggested upon from a, from a business owner about the idea of a four-way stop at Monroe and Avery. I like that idea. And, because it's just something to get the truck, the cars from not accelerating when they come off Fremont and go south. I'd actually like to have a couple more stop signs, but I don't know if staff feels the same way about that. So we'll figure that out. So we're working on that. The FOTR RP is out. What's the deadline on that, Rich?
It's April, somewhere mid-April. I think it's the 10th, 17th, one of those two dates.
The Washington Street bid came in. The Lowell bid, who is a very well-recognized contractor, came in $150,000, less than the engineer's estimate. Williams and Work is still verifying everything. What I would like to do, if possible, is Monday, April 8th. And I know there's a planning commission meeting at 7, but I'd like to have it. commission meeting at seven, but I'd like to have it at six. I don't think you need more than an hour. Um, I'd like to have a special meeting of the council to go over the bond ordinance, um, approvals that are required, but I also need to have Warren Kramer come and share with you the rate analysis. We have, we've completed the rate study, or we're just about, we just tied up the last thing for the rate study, um, and, uh, I'd like him to share that with you, um, before you take action.
Oh, April 8th?
April, Monday, April 8th.
At six?
I'd like to do it at six.
I can do that. Can anybody else do that?
I know, I would have said 5:30.
Marty can do it, I got plenty anyway.
Yeah, I'll just curl up in the wall here. Let me get it. Yes, I can do it.
You good with that, Jim?
Mm-hmm.
Eric, please.
Uh, yeah, I'll actually work early, but I can make it work.
Um, so we'll hope, we're planning, we're, we're tentatively planning, I've already, we're planning on that date, so, um, we'll, uh, we'll fill you in as we get more. Um, the bu, the budget, I have made the decision, um, to not ex, extend any utility lines on Kent Street from, um, from Washington to Jackson Street this time. It was, it wasn't, it was a want, not a need, um, and with all of the capital projects coming out of the water, sewer fund out of the next couple of years, I, I just, I've made the decision that we're not gonna budget for that in the upcoming year. We do have an issue, uh, well, it's not an issue. When we were going through all, we, part of this capital rate study that we did, we, we planned out, we actually had projects slated all the way to 2040, uh, but, um, we really focused up till about 2031 of water and sewer projects. And when we were going through our capital list through SAW, we didn't realize that there was a replacement of a, of a four-inch water line on Jefferson between Maine and Kent, um, and it was slated for like 28, 29, which, that was what our SAW grant, but when we started looking at, at that, we have a sewer repair we need to make on Jefferson in that area. Anyway, it makes no sense to do the sewer repair, then five years later, come back and put the water line in. It makes absolutely no sense, so I'm gonna move that project up, and, um, so we would do that, so we would do everything, we'd plan for everything in the, in the summer of '25. So we would, we would move all the, all the road projects to the summer of '25, south of Monroe. I'm sorry, south of Maine. Um, the other thing I want, I'm gonna do is, one, for some unknown reason, we didn't put Front Street in, in the construction. When we did, when we planned these streets, I, I don't have an explanation for that. I thought it was in, but I would add Front Street, or find funds to add Front Street for that part of the construction, so we'll just knock all that out, but we'll still do the north side this year. So that's how I'm preparing it for the budget. Speed bumps, um, I've evaluated this one quite a bit as well. Um, I'm gonna back off on this one. Main, as mu, as much as I would like the idea of speed bumps, the, the cost that, the, the issue is cost, that, and you, you have, I mean, if you, if you, I know, I'm not comfortable putting them in, in, on, you know, in the, in the wintertime. That's, that's, that's really an issue for me, um, because I don't want the plows to damage them, I don't want the fire trucks to have to deal with them. But if we were to put temporary ones in, one, pad is $6,000, just to buy the pad, there's also $6,000 annually to put the, put the, uh, put a speed bump in, and then a $6,000 to remove it annually, and then comes out of the local street fund or maybe street fund, which is where all our, all our street product, all our street projects are, are being funded out of. So it, and to me, it just makes no sense. So I'm, the, we, we looked at it, I looked at it, I have made the decision, we're not gonna pursue it. Um, and then the last thing, brush pickup. We will have brush pickup again this year. Um, it will be April 29th through May 3rd. I will put stuff on the website, I will notify the ledger, I will notify the, uh, most first look. Um, it's gonna be a little different this year. Two, what, the biggest issue is staff, our, our staff and light power staff is so busy with all of the projects that we got going on between both of us. We're gonna do one path that week, um, and then, um, nothing more than a six-inch branch. Before, we, we've gone up, I believe, to like 12 inches. We had, we had bigger ones that we could chip, the chipper could use it, but the time, the time that's involved in that is just, it's too much, and it's gonna take our staff and light power staff away from all the other projects they have to do, so, um, we're gonna get something out here this week about that, but we, we do plan on still trying to provide that service as well as.
When you put that out, make sure you put in there, just like previous years, that the cut end is facing the right, so they are just grabbing it that way, not having to take the time to turn the brush around.
Yep.
So, long as we do that.
Yep. That's all I have.
Cool. Any questions?
I'd like to just note that a number of people on Riverside Drive have come to me requesting a temporary speed bump, so I don't know, that, not in the road construction, but I don't know. They're, um, probably gonna come in to present to us later this year, but I guess speeding on Riverside Drive is a problem.
Something we are looking at with, with Riverside when we do construction is, I've asked to see if we can maybe do something like we do on Lincoln Lake, where you don't allow, you know, you don't have the direct access. We are looking at something along those lines. I'm gonna, I'm gonna probably push back on the, the cost, I mean, that's a, that's $12,000 a year cost for one speed bump. That's, now we're taking.
One isn't gonna do it.
One's not gonna do it.
You're gonna be five or six.
And you're, if, if you wanna do that, then we're taking away from paving streets, which is, I think is our overall focus right now, because we only have X amount of dollars.
Could we, could we do something with, uh, stop signs?
I like that idea.
I mean, it's relatively inexpensive, right?
Right.
But man, and if you're third block, they just gotta stop.
So the, the issue is whether or not they actually work. They're actually defined, what you, is it an aesthetic thing? Is it, is it a thing to appease people, or does it actually work? That's, that's the debate we're having internally with staff right now.
Because if we're gonna do stop signs over there, I'd like to use the ones that, uh, have solar panel and they light up, right? So you, there's no mistaking it's a stop sign.
Rich, why don't you share your opinion about this, because you, you.
I have a axe. So, stop signs are wonderful things. They are usually installed because they're warranted at a location that has a traffic control. They're not installed because there's a speeding problem. Speeding is a function of law enforcement. Stop signs are a function of traffic control. So my opinion is traffic signs should only install where it's warranted. Speeders should be, uh, speeders should be enforced.
Okay, 'cause I know when they come by our, our buildings, they are just flat on the fuel and going. I don't think chief has enough officers in the day department out there.
That's, that's the other issue is with our staffing level, we just cannot provide that level of proactive service.
And that's where I feel a, stop signs would, if they don't stop, then they don't stop, right?
Then you have a problem.
Yes.
That you created, so then there's a lot of ability to socialize. So that's why you have to be very careful with those stop signs.
Well, I can tell you South Hudson and M21 is a, a roll through red lighting if you don't feel like you wanna stop. I was there today, and this, this guy, a dodge like mine just turned right and never even thought of stopping.
How similar.
Yes, exactly. If I was a police officer, I'd have wrote him up there.
And like Riverside always comes to the forefront, but there's people going over 25, foremen all the time.
I mean, he overcut through simply and they speed down, speeding simply.
I haven't, well, with that being said, out here on Monroe, I, I purposely have loved when the, at what's here, getting out or going to, and I really haven't seen excessive speeding going in and out.
I.
I see it going past my house and heading up towards you, but I don't see it down there as much.
I see it here. I see it in front of my office at 2:30 every day.
We can see it any time of the day on Bowser Road, too.
True.
Unless some, unless our one or two officers are literally sitting there all day.
Right.
They just like to spend, if you figure 30 grand annually, if you put in five of them.
You're, you're, unless, I mean, unless, I mean, you could specialist, that's what I guess, maybe. I don't know, but, yeah.
But this is the problem that problem, though, that you would, you know what I mean?
Have you done a study, what is the traffic flow on Riverside? Is it 3,000 cars a day? Is it 100 cars a day? So maybe it's not as big of an issue as we think of the volume of cars.
Yep.
If it's 3,000, maybe we warrant stop signs. I just don't know what that study is.
Well, you've done it now, so.
I haven't said anything for a long time. Long time. Um, would it be logical to change the direction on the north end of Riverside, so you can come halfway down the street coming south, halfway down the street going north, and then exit, and then exit out to Hudson on one of the crossovers? That would stop it from being a thorough fair street, not, just a thought.
Not a terrible idea. I mean, it would take an adjustment there.
The issue, well, the issue's gonna be road width. The, the issue with that road is road width. I don't know if you can actually fit two cars, fit, um, fit two-way traffic on that road. That's it, but I, I don't know if, uh, that is the, I mean, that is by far my opinion, the narrowest street in the city, and I wonder if in today's day and standards, that would actually be improved as a legal street.
Yeah.
Mike and I add also, so we're getting ready to resurface some of these roads as well. That's another opportunity for us to maybe narrow them up in key points, that will also reduce the speed of traffic. So you can do a lot of speed reduction through design rather than stop signs. So if you're gonna resurface them, you might wanna incorporate some of those elements.
You're talking bringing the curbing in and making.
Yeah, and you don't have to do it everywhere. You don't have to make a whole street more narrow, you can do it at select locations.
Just narrow it out.
The narrower the road is, the slower people will go.
Yeah.
Even visually, if they feel like the road is visually narrower, it's slow down, too.
Would those narrow areas, then, would we put green space on both sides to make it feel, uh, narrow?
Yeah, there's lots of things you can do like that.
We gotta do these low costs, because we got a lot of streets we have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one, that's kind of very, I, I think we need to do these things, but we gotta remember cost is a factor. The more we spend on a street, that's less money we can allocate to another street that we need, so we just need to be conscious of that.
Well, you're opening yourself up, too, because if we put a bunch of speed bumps on Riverside, now you gotta tell other people that their street isn't.
Right.
Speeding isn't as prevalent, when it might be just as prevalent till now.
Right, and, I mean, you know, I'm almost taking, I mean, I haven't taken this, but it's almost like a road, co, road commission position. You just pave the road, and that's it.
You.
The other thing Eric said, too, I, I do wanna encourage residents, if they do have a concern about their streets, come in and address us.
Yes.
We can take it from that, not just a flat, tonight, don't come in, you know, because we don't think it's a good idea.
Right.
I'm still gonna encourage them to come in, voice your opinions, and maybe they have something that, that we're not discussing tonight, that.
Right.
We might say, yep, that's a great, great idea.
Right, yeah, I'm open to, yeah, I'm open to any ideas, preferably low cost, but, um, but also, I mean, letting our officers know where the problems are, because the officers are, there's more pressure being put on the officers to make more stops and be more visible in the neighborhoods, and I've made that very imperative with the, with the police chief, and I, I know the police chief is doing the best he can with that, um, but if we don't, if we, if we're getting call, you know, there's things now we can do, we just get, it's a street, we're getting the speed trailer, we can move the speed trailer around. That'll give us information, that'll give us data information. We're looking at possibly even putting more of the traffics, uh, the radar signs, like, but the lower, the, the not as, um, heavy-duty ones that we have, but putting those in some of the more, more, um, spots in the neighborhood, so we're looking at, we're looking at certain things we can try and do to try and alleviate this a little bit better.
And I believe our police do know where the troubled areas are. It's not like it's just popped up today.
No.
We've known for quite a while where those issues are.
We, uh, concentrate a lot of, like, Bowser Road there, Foreman, Hudson, where we get most, last month, we actually made over 300 traffic stops. Um, did a lot of tickets, but we made a lot of contacts with people. Made, made a lot more arrests than we've made in a while, just from those traffic stops. So we're trying to be more visible, we're, you know, um, we have other problems, too, like on Hudson Street with the left turn light, traffic backs up, and then you got somebody passing four blocks to get into that left turn lane.
Yeah.
We make a lot of stops like that also. We get that on Main Street in the afternoon going east.
Yeah.
Same thing.
All right. Everybody good on that? You good?
Yep.
You done? All right, uh, appointments. You wanna be on Light and Power still?
Of course.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay. Greg's reappointed to Light and Power. You gonna check the column for me?
Yep.
Okay. And I, Susie, if you can email me the boarding commission application.
Okay.
I have a builder that's interested in construction board of appeals.
Okay.
Mike and I have talked about, and he meets all the criteria for that board whenever they need. Uh, all right. Council comments. Slither over the lid, Liz.
I've got nothing.
No.
All right.
Uh, we attended CAP, kind of now in life, and we took some classes, uh, kind of informative of what's going on. What I found amazing is, is I took a tobacco and how it affects. Vape cigarettes are not taxed. A pack of cigarettes gets a $2 tax per pack being sold. Vape cigarettes are not taxed. It's 300 million dollars a year that the state doesn't collect through that.
Hmm.
Um, and I found that just utterly amazing. Other than that, Jim and I sat in some classes, we learned a lot, um, and it was a good time. We came back with some really good feedback from other communities, uh, to how they're dealing with their situations similar to us, so, all good.
James?
Uh, everybody gonna be able to attend Expo and work the booth for a little bit? I know Rich and I are gonna be dropping off the stuff for you, Mike, or do I need to pick it up, so I can.
They're gonna drop, they're gonna drop everything off on Friday.
Okay.
And then, you said you were gonna set up Saturday morning, I'll be here Saturday morning, then, you can set up Saturday morning, and then normally, you just take it back, so.
Yep.
But we have one table for us, and, and then Williams Works has their own table, so we just split the table like we normally do.
Um, last week, we got to, to attend a Lou Bender, uh, meeting, it was really good. It's kind of a self-building team effort, and, uh, there were a lot of good things that were, were discussed and talked about, and it's, it's always fun to see Lou.